Next, we are to our item that was added to the agenda, which is a resolution and presentation that precedes the resolution relating to Southwest Light Rail. And I am a little bit unclear on who may lead. I know that we have a large staff team here that is prepared to present, I think, some underlying information. So Mr. Regineous is here from the mayor's office, and I will let you perhaps introduce what information we may have before us.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. Peter Regineous, Policy Director for Mayor Hodges. I am one member of a team, as the chair indicated, of the team of internal staff who have been meeting regularly for years, working on the Southwest LRT project. That team includes Jenny Hager and Don Flom from Public Works, Jack Byers, Paul Mogish, and Beth Elliott from CPED, Corey Conover from the City Attorney's Office, our regular attendees, as well as others. This is a big project which involves a lot of folks. If I ever sound remotely intelligent on technical matters, it is only because I've had the opportunity to soak up the expertise of our highly talented staff. It's an honor to work with them. Thank you for allowing me to kick things off. Mayor Hodges is strongly supportive of the resolution, which has been developed by our staff and led by Councilmember Reich, including with the resolved revised resolving clause. It is important and necessary that this be done, and Mayor Hodges is strongly supportive of that work. Why are we here? We are here because of what happened recently and because of what is about to happen. What happened recently? Within the last few months, we got the results back from a freight, a study of freight and options for realigning freight that we fortunately have, thanks to the intervention of the governor's office. And most recently, the city, the county, and all the cities along the corridor were given the opportunity to have their staffs respond to those draft reports, both a freight report and also some additional analyses on environmental questions. That is what has happened recently, and our staff has done great work in making sure that those draft reports are informed by our city positions and expertise. What is about to happen? It is likely that between now and the next time you have the meeting of this group, the committee of the whole, the Met Council staff will make their recommendation to the corridor management committee and the Met Council on how they suggest the freight issue be resolved. So this is our last opportunity, as this body, to talk about this issue and state the city's position before the Met Council staff makes that recommendation. The resolution before you simply reiterates the position that the city has held for many years, that we oppose co-locating both freight and LRT in the Kennelworth, in the narrow Kennelworth corridor, and that that opposition includes the shallow tunnels, and further that we support LRT, Southwest LRT, as a project if the freight is relocated in a responsible way. Fortunately, we have a way to do that. Rerouting the freight with the Trans Systems solution is a better option, frankly, not just for Minneapolis, it is a better option for the region, it is a better option for St. Louis Park. It may seem odd that as part of this presentation, I, and more importantly, our professional staff, will highlight these benefits for Minneapolis, for the region, and for the city of St. Louis Park, because frankly, if we don't do it, and here in this forum, it may not get said. It goes to the most basic question, so why do we build rail? It is more expensive, there must be a reason. Well, there are several. We get higher ridership with rail than with comparable bus service. But not just in year one. We get higher ridership over time because rail uniquely, in comparison to buses, has the ability to build its own ridership over time by catalyzing economic development. We are making a $1.5 billion investment in rail in this region, we should try to get the best bang for the buck. One of the things you will hear from our staff is that the way to get the best bang for the buck from a development standpoint is to relocate freight away from LRT stops, not just in Minneapolis, like with the Westlake Street Station, but two stations in St. Louis Park, who would benefit extraordinarily, and the St. Louis Park tax base extraordinarily, from rerouting freight. This has not been talked about, and it's time. That is just one reason amongst many, and I will not list them all, that it has just one reason amongst many, that rerouting the freight is the best option for the city of Minneapolis, for the region, and for St. Louis Park. So my remaining role, and Don Flom has put a map up there for us to look at, my remaining role before I turn it over to Public Works and CPED is just to provide a little history. The history is long, and I will truncate it dramatically. Why are we in this situation? Well, in the late 1990s, the Minnesota Department of Transportation was backed into a corner while rebuilding the Hiawatha LRT line. As you may recall, freight used to run right through the heart of the city on what is today the Midtown Greenway, on its way to the yards in downtown St. Paul. When they were rebuilding Highway 55, Hiawatha Avenue, in anticipation of the Hiawatha LRT line, the engineers realized that freight would not be able to continue to use that historic path that it had used to get from western Minnesota in the Dakotas to downtown St. Paul. Freight had to be severed and no longer run in the Midtown, what is now the Midtown Greenway. It had to be severed at Highway 55, and it had to go elsewhere. Well, the folks who, the agencies who were responsible for this came up with an alternative. Instead of freight running through here, along the Kennelworth corridor, this maybe isn't the best map for making this point, instead of freight running through here and along the Kennelworth corridor, freight would run onto the MNNS line, up to BNSF, and then into downtown Minneapolis. Instead of running here, through St. Louis Park and Kennelworth, St. Louis Park and Minneapolis, it would run through here on the MNNS. That was the plan. But, at the last moment, when federal monies needed to be expended, they realized that a crucial site, the Golden Auto Site, which is right in here, was contaminated and unfit for construction. At the same time, MNDAT was facing this quickly approaching expiration date on the federal funds needed for Highway 55, so the county allowed Twin Cities and Western Railroad to temporarily move to the publicly owned right-of-way in the Kennelworth corridor. Temporarily move all the way through here, as opposed to continuing on what is today the Midtown Greenway. This was supposed to be for a maximum of four to six years, thus allowing time for environmental cleanup at the Golden Auto Site. The state of Minnesota and others provided substantial funds to the city of St. Louis Park for remediation of that crucial site, and the Twin Cities and Western Railroad signed an agreement with Hennepin County to move their operations to the preferred MNNS corridor when that corridor was ready, and when the Golden Auto Site was ready. Of course, that was not the end of deliberations, we also had a decision, that was in the 90s. In the 2000s, we were deciding where should LRT go through that official process. For many reasons, the Kennelworth corridor was not the city's preferred route for Southwest LRT. Then Mayor Ryback, Councilmember Goodman, then Councilmember Ralph Remington, then Councilmember Betsy Hodges, and others argued that LRT should not bypass the dense neighborhoods of south Minneapolis, and that it should go in some way through the Midtown corridor. After years of work, the city reluctantly agreed to proceed with the county's preferred alignment of Kennelworth, but we did so with the understanding that longstanding promises that freight would be rerouted, that those promises would be kept. In 2012, the DES showed a co-location plan, co-location of freight and LRT in the Kennelworth corridor, that had never advanced through the alternatives analysis phase, the process, and it had layouts developed by, not by the county, but by St. Louis Park. The DES, working off those documents, found that co-locating freight and LRT in Kennelworth would be detrimental to the environment. I share this history with you, and in conclusion, to make the following three points. The plans for TCW to move to the MNNS corridor have been in the works for many years. Number two, the concept of co-location was introduced for the purposes of environmental documentation, where it was dismissed. And third, the city of Minneapolis has been and continues to be opposed to co-location, for the reasons I have described in others. At this point, I would like to, I believe Jenny Hager is next, and then we will have somebody from CPED speak to you, and then after that, open it for questions, if that's okay with you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Regineous, and I'll welcome forward Jenny Hager, and I'll just note that we have been joined by Commissioner Peter McLaughlin, as well as several neighbors from neighborhoods in the city of Minneapolis.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Councilmembers Jennifer Hager with Transportation Planning and Engineering in the Public Works Department. Peter has asked me to come up, Peter, and talk to you briefly about what the Trans Systems solution is. So late last fall, Met Council, with the input of Hennepin County in both cities, Minneapolis and St. Louis Park, developed a scope of work to bring an independent consultant in to take a look at the freight reroute question. And the first thing that consultant did was take a look at all of the historical documents that have been looked at and developed on this issue over a number of years. So they took a look at those documents, and they took a look at all the options that are laid out in those documents, and tried to get a handle on what those looked like. Then they met with the various stakeholders, including the public agencies, the cities, the railroads, and then they attended two different town hall meetings to hear directly from the constituents of the cities. They went back, and they came forward with a design that, for the most part, follows the existing MNNS alignment in St. Louis Park. What it does that's different than what previous designs did is that it smoothes out the vertical curves within that alignment, the up and down, which is of concern to the railroads, and it also makes less severe and smoothes out some of the horizontal curves in that alignment. Their design fully meets AREMA design standards, which was specified in their scope of work, and in fact, over much of the length, it exceeds those design standards, meeting what are called BNSF, or Burlington Northern and Santa Fe Design Standards. In addition to fully meeting what was specified as far as engineering goes, this alignment provides a number of benefits to St. Louis Park. Trans System is also calling out a number of items that would improve the existing conditions of the MNNS alignment. Today, the MNNS alignment is older rail of a lower grade than what would be constructed today, so what is proposed is a higher-grade rail that would be continuously welded, so there would be less clickety-clack as the train goes over the tracks, and it would be better able to handle current trains, longer trains, heavier trains. They're also calling for some cutting-edge technology that doesn't exist today, things like communications that would help the railroad gain access and travel through, and things to prevent trespassing on the railroad that happens today, fencing and whatnot, in addition to closing a number of at-grade crossings and reducing conflicts along the alignment. Previous concepts put forth by Met Council last summer, known as Brunswick Alternatives, were very impactful to the community, and the Trans Systems design eliminates what was mostly unacceptable as far as high two-story berms going through that community. In addition, there will no longer be any switching, sorting, or blocking operations by the railroad within St. Louis Park with this new design option. And as Peter alluded to, there are two additional at-grade crossings that are eliminated with this alignment and this design, both at Beltline and Wooddale, which are also light rail station locations within St. Louis Park. That improves the development opportunities there and the pedestrian connectivity there, which my friends in CPED will expand upon for you.
Thank you, Ms. Hager. We do have a couple of questions, and I just, these might be for you, and so I want to make sure to take those. We have three councilmembers in queue. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You use the phrase unacceptable, or, you know, very undesirable with these berms. As a person who represents an area who has several raised rail corridor crossings, I mean, and we're not talking a minor operation, we're talking international rail, third largest in the region, raised, several feet in the air, I mean, what is, I guess I just have a hard time understanding our other jurisdictions' concern about those, given that I live in an area that has several of them. What demonstrable concern is there, or is it just a concern?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Reich, I don't know that I can speak for the residents of St. Louis Park, but I can say that the so-called Brunswick options that the Met Council had put forth last summer literally showed freight on an alignment that was two stories high. So where freight is today, it would go up in several orders of magnitude in people's backyards on a very narrow right-of-way. So there were emotions expressed by those residents with respect to that design.
So it was more of an emotive thing? I mean, again, representing an area that has several of these raised berms, and they've been there since the 20s, there's really no demonstrable outcome of such an arrangement by any posture, or any demonstration, or any study. It's just an emotive response. Is that your observation?
And I just may say that may be more of a comment from Councilmember Reich, but if, so Ms. Hager, if you have something that you think is factual to share, please do, but...
In fact, I am seeking, is there documentation to that effect, or is it just an emotive response? And if there's documentation, I'm willing to receive it.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Reich, those were comments directed, submitted directly by St. Louis Park residents to the project office.
So more of the emotive, not the, it wasn't a technical documentation? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, and I just have two questions, I think. So you mentioned that several at-grade crossings would be closed. Do you know how many that was, or maybe you said a few? Are we talking five, or six, or two, or one?
Sure. Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, along the MNNS, four at-grade crossings would be eliminated, in addition to eliminating at-grade crossings to the east of the connection with the MNNS at Wooddale and Beltline. So there are a total of six that go away with this design.
Okay, thank you. And my other question is, what role does the railroads play in this? Do they have to approve the reroutes? Can they veto one of these? Have they, do they have to accept them? How does that work?
So procedural next steps, I guess, in the role of the railroads.
Yes, Madam Chair, Councilmember, I'm going to look to Peter because I think he was going to speak to this, and offer the podium to him.
I can also wait till later, if that would be more convenient for the presentation.
All right, so maybe we'll hold that on the procedural next step, just knowing there are several councilmembers in queue with other questions, so let's take those first. Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Hager. Perhaps this is a question for you, perhaps for Mr. Flom, or Mr. Kotke. I was just kind of figuring, trying to get in context here about Trans Systems as an organization. Can you help define their credentials and how they came to this, these conclusions, and as part of the process and timing?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Quincy, Trans Systems is a mid-sized firm comprising, comprised of about 1,000 professional employees with 37 offices across the nation. They are nationally recognized and have expertise in freight rail design, they have experience with all Class 1 railroads. Civil Design, Inc., which is the engineering firm that the Short Line Railroad that we're working with here, Twin Cities and Western, is a small, multi-disciplinary firm based in South Dakota. They have, to the best of our ability to, what we were able to locate, about 15 to 20 professional engineers on staff.
Okay. And what's the relationship between those two organizations?
Sure. Trans Systems is the independent consultant that was hired by Met Council to perform the study that we are commenting on the draft right now, and Civil Design, Inc. is the firm that Twin Cities and Western has hired to assist them through this process. They've been with them since early on in the conversation with the draft environmental impact statement and whatnot.
And did they have a separate report, or were there any issues that came out of that that we'd like to know about?
Civil Design, Inc. did submit formal comments on the draft study as we did, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Hager, I just had some questions about safety, because it's such an important issue, and I know all of us take that very seriously. And so I just, I wanted to sort of understand better, some of the background here is that, you know, the governor directed the Met Council to do this additional freight study. Could you just tell us how was safety defined in that study? Was that something that was the responsibility of the consultant to do, or how did that come to be defined?
Sure. Madam Chair, Councilmember Bender, I will talk about the engineering design standard that was specified by the Met Council in their scope of work. And again, I mentioned previously, but when Met Council developed their scope of work, they did it with the input of Hennepin County in both cities, Minneapolis and St. Louis Park. And the scope of work clearly defines AREMA as the design standard to be reached on this design, and we know that the design put forth by Trans Systems does fully meet AREMA design standards, and in most cases exceeds those design standards.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. Could you just briefly, since we are not engineers, describe some of the safety qualities that AREMA standards include?
AREMA, Madam Chair, Councilmember Bender, AREMA will set forth the guidelines for the horizontal and vertical curvature, length of tangent, those sorts of things for the alignment. But the Trans Systems design also includes a number of improvements that are related to safety that are called out in their design. And one of them is called CTC, or centralized traffic control, which is a computerized system that would use remote control to change the signals and the switches along the alignment, and this would help in coordinating the access rights for the Short Line Railroad, TCW, to gain access up along the alignment and to the BNSF alignment. They need access from both controlling railroads. In addition, the Trans Systems design calls for the option to do an inter-guard rail system on the freight alignment that would help with any potential for derailment, broken rail detection, so defects along the alignment that could be detected and fixed before they become a problem. And we are aware of an ongoing issue with trespassing on the MNNS today. It's, you know, it's a relatively low-volume alignment today, and so to protect pedestrians and deter trespassing in the future, they're calling for some fencing of that.
All right, that's all the questions that we have right now. I wonder if we might turn to the process question, and I don't, before we take the CPED report, so I think Ms. Hager indicated Mr. Regineous would give an update on that.
If Councilmember Gordon could specifically repeat the question, that would be helpful.
Would you like to repeat that question, Councilmember Gordon?
What authority do the railroads have in determining where a relocation goes, or if their freight line is relocated?
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. The decision about whether or not freight is relocated belongs to a federal body known as the Surface Transportation Board, or STB, or at least that is the official process. Met Council is now saying that the railroads have to agree to reroute the freight, but that's a decision of the Met Council, that's not the formal process. The formal process is for the Surface Transportation Board to decide.
Has the Surface Transportation Board weighed in on this yet?
They have not been asked to weigh in on this yet.
They have not been asked?
They have not been asked to weigh in on this yet. That's what we're hoping this is going to lead to, because the fact that they haven't been in all this time is part of why we're in this situation.
Are they going to be asked before the preferred route is brought forward or approved by the Met Council?
If freight is being taken seriously, if rerouting the freight is being taken seriously, they would, they would work with Hennepin County, which is the owner of the Kennelworth corridor, to bring that to the Surface Transportation Board.
And right now, we don't know when it's going to go to the Surface Transportation Board?
There is, in the scenario that we're concerned about, they wouldn't bring it to the Surface Transportation Board. They would, because, again, this is not the formal process. What we're concerned about is that they would, by virtue of giving the railroad a veto power that they would not otherwise have, that they would therefore make a decision to not go to the Surface Transportation Board. That's exactly what our concern is.
That seems like a serious concern, yeah.
Indeed.
Okay, and we had one follow-up, just Mr. Regineous, before you sit down. Mr. Regineous, before you sit down. We have one follow-up from Councilmember Reich.
Just following, and perhaps extrapolating on that concern, as has been stated, what indication are we to assume, as the city, that the county will pursue what could be a very significant pursuit on that question through that venue, through that governing body?
Part of what, Councilmember Reich, Madam Chair, part of what makes this process complicated is Hennepin County is no longer the lead agency for the project. They were for a number of years. The lead agency of the project is now the Met Council. If the Met Council proceeds with rerouting the freight, presumably they would reach out to Hennepin County as a partner to go to the Surface Transportation Board. So the property owner is Hennepin County, but the decision right now rests with the Metropolitan Council, and that's what the mayor and councilmembers have expressed, you know, to me, that they're concerned about, is that the Met Council might not make a decision that involves Hennepin County using its authority as the owner of the property to go to the Surface Transportation Board. So the decision right now rests with the Metropolitan Council.
And, Councilmember Reich, did you have a...
That's very clarifying, I appreciate that, and I guess by way of opining, that we would, as a city, as a municipality that's impacted by this, would implore our partners to do every avenue of due diligence on this matter, and including the one you just described, that we'd implore the county, we'd implore the Met Council as an earnest partner in this project to do so. Again, that's just opining, I'm sorry.
And I did want to reference here, because we are talking about the county, that, again, I had mentioned Commissioner McLaughlin is here, and as a county is a partner, I have told him that we would extend a professional courtesy to have him address the council, but I will do so after the staff presentations, so, all right. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Regineous, one last quick, Mr. Regineous?
Mr. Regineous, we have one, and if you want to just hold, Councilmember Bender. Mr. Regineous, we're going to need you up here one more time. And hello, yes.
I'm sorry, Councilmember.
That's all right, that's all right. Mr. Regineous, we have one more question from Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Regineous, do you know how long the process takes to go to the Surface Transportation Board with these kinds of questions?
Well, that depends. If they, if they move forward without the approval of TCW, which again is a scenario that of course should have been baked into the process, the city was never told, "We're only doing this if the railroads agree." So that scenario takes some time. It, by our current estimates, that would take a year, and so that, in any process that was taking freight relocation seriously, that should be baked into the process, unless we were assuming that the freight companies were going to agree, which is not what the city was told in 2010. If the city had been told, "We're only doing this if the freight companies agree," I don't think the city would have approved the Kennelworth alignment, if we thought the railroad was being given veto power. If the railroad, railroads were to agree, the process would be simpler and faster.
And stay right there.
Okay, sorry.
As often happens, comments beget comments. So we have a couple more questions. Councilmember Gordon.
So I'm just curious, did the Met Council actually take a vote on the not sending this forward to the Surface Transportation Board unless the freight companies agreed?
Not that I'm aware of, Councilmember.
But we think this is their decision? Do you know who made the decision?
It has been expressed by staff... It has been expressed by staff as a position of the Met Council, but as far as I'm aware, the Met Council has never weighed in on that. Again, if, if they had, the city would have been very seriously concerned about that because choosing to say that we will only move forward with the approval of the railroads is a major policy decision. That's a major policy decision. And if that had been expressed to the city, it would have changed how we approached the decision regarding the Kennelworth alignment. And as far as I'm aware, there's no vote, you know, taking that position. It's simply a position that's been expressed by Met Council staff.
And I can look this up later too, but I'm just curious, who sits on the Surface Transportation Board and how are they appointed?
There are three members of the Surface Transportation Board. I, there are other people in the room who might be able to answer this question better. They're appointed, I believe, by the President. I think it's prescribed that, that two of them are of the President's party and one is not of the President's party. There's currently, one of the three seats is vacant, but I think they're in the process of filling it. I'm going to have people elbow me if I'm describing this incorrectly.
Thank you. And I just wanted to also offer that, as our staff is here, if they want to.
Did I get that right?
Okay, thank you.
Accurate description. All right, we do have a couple more comments in queue.
Sure.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Reginius, it sounds to me like we're on the path of do what's fastest, do what's easiest, do what's least resistance, rather than what makes the most sense as it pertains to environmental issues, ridership, or the way the partners, the most major partner, the city of Minneapolis thinks the alignment should be. So I guess my question to you is if you had known, and if we had known or even contemplated that we would be treated this way, would we have voted for this alignment in the first place?
Madam Chair, I can.
I think that's a bit of a rhetorical question.
Oh, it's not!
Let's maybe just leave it at that.
Madam Chair, no, no, really, it's not. Because I was the only person who voted no last time.
And I just say that because
I have colleagues and staff.
Mr. Reginius doesn't have a vote.
Do you believe, Mr. Reginius, in advising the mayor and members of the council, that if we had known that the county wouldn't fulfill its promise to relocate freight and that the county and the Met Council together would have let the railroad veto any realignment, would you have advised us to vote for that alignment?
And I think, Mr. Reginius, again, Mr. Reginius is the mayor's policy aide, and I don't know that, at this point.
I don't have a vote, but I would, I would just express that, that there is a difference between the, the political process and the, the policy outcome. I would just say that the policy outcome that the city outlined in, in 2010 was a reasonable conclusion, not a preferred conclusion. The city preferred LRT to go through Midtown. But it was a reasonable conclusion to, to allow LRT at grade with the freight rerouted because, as our, our technical staff can describe to you clearly, you can fit two LRT tracks where one freight track goes. And while there would be greater frequency, which is obviously not welcome, of, of train traffic, the impact area would be roughly the same as it is today. You can fit it in the same space and maintain the, the park-like corridor of the condition. So from a public policy standpoint, what was voted upon in 2010 was a reasonable position for the city to take. But obviously, as you pointed out, the, the situation's not turning out as we anticipated.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Goodman.
My follow-up question is, so, since we're on a path of we didn't think this would happen, what happens on the next path of we didn't think this would happen if we agreed to some sort of fake shallow tunnel? And in the end, CTIB and the legislators around the state don't want to do a tunnel, then we end up with co-location at grade, which could result in the condemnation and taking of homes as well as the moving of the bike path? How are we to trust that a promise would be made going forward if we can't trust a promise that's been made to this point?
Okay. And I, I think I'll, that's fair comment to make, and I think we'll take that as comment.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Byers, I think?
Madam Chair and Councilmembers, Jack Byers, manager of long-range planning for CPED. I wanted to bring to your attention a series of things that I'm sure you all know and are aware of, but I think it's important in the context of this conversation to have this lens in your mind and certainly in the conversation. The purpose of light rail transit is not light rail transit. It is not to build a train so that we have a train. It is to build a train to serve the public and so that the public can actually commute from home to work or any other place much more efficiently. So the city's position has always been that Southwest LRT is an important asset for the region. We have been told by the Met Council that the alternative to rerouting freight rail traffic into St. Louis Park would be equal or better as an alternative. And so the Met Council has proposed two shallow tunnels with the intention that this is equal or better to rerouting freight traffic. And actually, based on our analysis and the studies, we believe that the impacts for co-location, even with the shallow tunnels, are worse than relocating the freight rail traffic. And that's because of the actual details, which we can get into if you like, but the details of noise, vibration, of course, the aesthetics, the difficulty it creates for TOD, and also because the shallow tunnels would eliminate a great separated crossing of the Cedar Lake Parkway with the freight rail traffic.
And, Mr. Byers, I just want to interrupt because you mentioned the TOD, but you're referencing the transit-oriented design of the stationary plans?
That's correct.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So from a regional perspective, the Kennelworth Corridor, as you know, runs through the chain of lakes and the Grand Rounds. Both of these are part of the regional park system, and they are part of the regional park, they receive regional park funding. That regional park funding is through the Metropolitan Council. Also, the trail has about 2,000 riders a day, many of whom are from outside of Minneapolis but come through Minneapolis to get to home or work. That is also a regional asset, and it has regional funding. TOD is enhanced, we know from great experience in Minneapolis, particularly from the Hayawatha Line, that TOD is enhanced if you can actually get developers to build next to a station and if you can create better pedestrian connectivity to that station. So we know from experience on Hayawatha that things are complicated when you have rail lines in the mix. And so by taking the freight traffic out of the Kennelworth Corridor and rerouting it into St. Louis Park, it not only benefits two of our stations, the West 21st Street Station and the West Lake Station, it also benefits the Wooddale Station and the Beltline Station in St. Louis Park. And we're concerned that that analysis has not come forward either from the Met Council or from the city of St. Louis Park. And it's actually the city of Minneapolis that has to point out that this regional asset of light rail transit is actually better with co-location if you can create four better TOD opportunities, not only to raise property values, but also to raise ridership over the duration of this line. And so the assets of this regional benefit and this particularly special place in the region are not just aesthetic or cultural, cultural or recreational, it's also about the commuting public, both by train, by LRT, and also by bicycle. And they should not be treated casually in the larger conversation. So we think that the Trans Systems solution is what really would propel the region forward the most quickly, and it is the most cost-effective. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Okay, there is one council member in queue with a question. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Byers. With respect to this becoming a regional asset, and I know that our own skills are more centered with a depth of experience in Minneapolis, I've heard very little public discussion on the development benefits of relocation from St. Louis Park, and that concerns me. Could you compare, or could you attempt to quantify the development benefits of freight relocation versus co-location on, in whole?
Sure. Madam Chair and Councilmember Palmasano, I don't know that I could quantify it. The Trans Systems study was scoped by the Metropolitan Council, and that study did an analysis of community impacts on St. Louis Park. It did not do a car, it was not scoped by the Met Council to do a corollary analysis of community impacts in Minneapolis, nor was it scoped that the study would look at the community benefits to Minneapolis and to St. Louis Park. So to date, they have not yet been quantified. And we think that that's an important consideration because the situation at hand, the challenge at hand is not only a technical situation, it is, it is related to those higher regional assets and benefits.
One follow-up, if you, if I may. In quantifying this by Met Council, do you know if this will be part of the decision-making process? Because I might just offer, I strongly believe that it should.
Madam Chair and Councilmember Palmasano, I am not aware that the Met Council is considering it, but the staff certainly agrees that it should be taken up.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's actually interesting that we're not sure if Met Council makes such statements about regional growth benefits in terms of benefit. Because if they don't, I do not know if the local jurisdiction at this time has identified density and density around transit-oriented development as a benefit. Though we may adopt that locally, and the Met Council may espouse that in some statements, I don't know if they're imposing that sort of term benefit in this manner as we're speaking. And I don't think it's coming from that local jurisdiction either. And it, it kind of colors the conversation away where if the local jurisdiction in question, in this case, St. Louis Park, does not say in any of their own documents that growth, transit-oriented development growth is a benefit and there are opportunities to do that around infrastructure improvements, they're not even the same sheet of music as the Met Council. And is that, is that a fair statement? Do they have a document that corresponds with Met Council's growth strategies for the region? I guess that's my, my technical question.
Madam Chair and Councilmember Reich, their comprehensive plan is adopted by their city council and by the Metropolitan Council, as is ours and every other municipality in the region. Their plans do call for transit-oriented development, but St. Louis Park does not have the implementation experience that Minneapolis has. And as, as I mentioned before, we know very well that things like a freight rail line can actually complicate implementation of TOD.
Just as a follow-up, it intrigues me that they actually have plans that call for it. And I think that we should probably note them in the record moving forward and probably implore the Met Council to explore their goals, their stated goals, and how we were going to grow this region as, as a, a matrix to evaluate how we move forward. Thank you.
I think that's an important point. And if I may add, the Metropolitan Council's current growth projections and draft plan for 2040 is now in public review. It's called Thrive 2040. Sure.
Okay, I am not seeing further questions. For you, Dr. Byers, and I wanted to just clarify, did we have any, that, those were our staff presentations because I want to ensure that I invite up Commissioner McLaughlin, as I promised to do. And if he is ready, we will take some comment from you. Commissioner McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the, of the committee. I come here today as someone who advocated for bringing a freight consultant in. They actually were, they were, they were brought in, and then he declared that he had a conflict. I voted with Mayor Ryback for the study of the freight and the water as a member of the Corridor Management Committee. In addition, we've hired a consultant, one of the, there's a half a dozen people in the country who are the best legal folks on Surface Transportation Board matters. And so we've, we've spent county money to bring that, that person in, and he's provided us with good advice, and your staff and your lawyer has met with him. In addition, just in terms of this last discussion, I actually, at the last Corridor Management Committee, requested the data as an evaluation criteria for comparing the two options. I specifically requested the data of Met Council on the development impacts of the two options. So that the dialogue that Councilmember Palmasano and Commissioner Reich, or Councilmember Reich were urging happen, there should be data forthcoming in the subsequent meetings of the Corridor Management Committee and the debate of the Met Council to compare the development impacts. Because that is, in fact, you're absolutely right, that's one of the factors that absolutely has to be taken into account. So I think I'm, I'm in, in agreement with you. I, I also have to say, I know there's a, there's anger with St. Louis Park. I, I dare say I'm madder at St. Louis Park than you are, okay? Having been in the deal. And I will tell you, they reneged on the, the understanding, okay? That's my, that's my position. So I don't, it's not like, it's not like I'm not mad at St. Louis Park, believe me. I'm mad, we've spent $4.75 million in IRF money, Environmental Response Fund money, to clean up that Golden Auto site, gave them another loan for $1.1 million. So in terms of the financing that Peter Reginius noted, the financing for the cleanup of that land, most of the money came from, from us. And so I'm not happy. Having said that, the water study that was done came back, and it's frankly, there are, there are not significant impacts on the water. That's the conclusion our consultants and our, our staff people have come to. On the freight relocation, I will comment to you that, again, we brought in an expert to help us to do the analysis on that. It strikes me, and this is, you're going to have to take this into account, it seems to me, it's about a four-cushion billiard shot to actually get the relocation, freight relocation to happen. By, by four, four cushion, I mean, you've got to have the right angle on the first, the first shot, the second, the third bounce, and the fourth bounce if we're going to actually succeed to get the freight relocation if it is opposed by the railroad, and the railroad has clearly indicated they are opposed. And it's my understanding, I'm not positive about this, my understanding that the, the lawyer that the, that they have hired, the railroad has hired, used to be a member of the Surface Transportation Board. So they, I mean, they've got, they've got their ace to fight this as well. The, the railroad situation is a tough one. And, you know, I don't blame Lincoln for many things, but I kind of blame Lincoln for giving the railroads as many rights as they've got. And so what, that is the situation that we're facing. So there, I really, we're, we're in a delicate moment here, a very delicate moment. And over the weekend, I was, I was thinking about Barbara Tuckman's book, The Guns of August, and it kind of felt like we were doing what they did before World War I. The nations of Europe were sort of moving inexorably toward the catastrophe that was World War I. And it feels a little bit like that's what we're moving toward here is an, is an impasse. I appreciate the, the modification to the language that was proposed in the resolution. I think that's a good step. It, I think, reflects the delicacy of the moment. And we have about two and a half months. It's the 26th of June is when the municipal consent process would come to an end under the current schedule. That would be the deadline under the Met Council's process. And so we have, there is time here to work on this. I think we do need to do that. I, I think that if we're going to pursue the equity goals of, of this council, the one Minneapolis idea that we need to, and if we're going to create a 21st century transportation system, we've got to make sure that we get Southwest Transit built. And so I think we're, we're, we're in this together to try to get this built. I've tried to be an honest broker, but I, I truly believe we need to get this, this line built. And I think we can, your resolution today and the, and the modifications, I think, are, are a good place for the city of Minneapolis to be at this point. And we've got two months of work ahead of us so that we can make a decision that's good for Minneapolis, good for the, good for the county, good for the region. So, Madam Chair, I appreciate the chance to comment today.
Thank you very much, Commissioner McLaughlin. I, there are some council members who are in queue, although I, I just want to say, I, I'm not sure if, if you want to take questions, or maybe we should allow these as comments. I'm not quite sure what my colleagues have, and so maybe I might just ask for these comments, or was there a more of a factual question for the commissioner? Because we want to allow both, but.
Whatever you like, Madam Chair.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. All right. So, and, and thank you again. So, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And there are a lot of, you know, representatives up here who are newer to the process than probably some of the negotiations that went on before. And you referenced a cleanup of a site. Would it be, would, I want to use the word reneg. Would it be, would, I want to use the word renig.
I did. I did as well, Madam Chair.
And so, there seems to be a renigging, but is it a renigging of a drafted agreement or a, what would be in the common parlance, gentleman's agreement?
In the modern parlance, probably a gentle person's agreement. But for which there is ample, I would argue, circumstantial evidence. There are references in statute. It's not a contractually enforceable language, but there are references in statute, there are references in our agreement with the railroad about that, that they would move when a, I believe the language is feasible and operationally efficient alternative is offered. What those words mean would have to be, that's one of the cushions in the four cushion shot I'm talking about is what that contractual language means and how we, whether we would be able to enforce it through the option that's available. But there was an understanding, and money flowed based on that understanding, cleaning up that site. And so, they have kind of changed their decision rule to, from, they would move, they would allow the freight to be moved, to if there's no other alternative, then they would accept the freight to be moved. That was, that's the change in the position, I believe, that St. Louis Park.
And Madam Chair and Mr. Commissioner, I don't really raise that to be rhetorical. I just wanted to reinforce the historical record of how significant the discussions were and how they were registered. And if you can correct me if I'm wrong, they seem substantial, real, and recordable.
Madam Chair, if I might, that's true. That's why I'm not happy. That's why I'm angry. But 17 years have passed. Seventeen years. And in that 17 years, the railroad industry has gone from being on a decline to being more in ascent. There are safety concerns that have changed and standards that have changed. And frankly, the market, I had a county commissioner from, who has contacts all the way out along this line, all the way to the border in South Dakota, saying that the shippers are concerned. And so, and the reality of control of railroads is that they have a lot of cards to play. And so, I think we're going to have to walk our way through this. I don't think the history is necessarily going to be controlling here. It can be, it's an annoyance, but I think we have to deal with the situation in front of us right now because it's unclear what our chances would be of actually enforcing that understanding if the railroad did not want to go along.
And Madam Chair and Mr. Commissioner, as a final follow-up to my initial question, you say annoyance, but could it be fair to say it could also be positive as a pivot point of the conversation moving forward? A pivot point?
Madam Chair.
However historical.
Councilmember Reich, I don't know exactly what you mean by pivot point. I'm not sure that a review of the history is going to be particularly instructive right now. I think we need to decide what are the options at our disposal right now? And what are the probabilities? It's a factor, it's a, there were understandings, those are a factor in the decision-making process. But I don't think the history and the commitments of 17 years ago are necessarily going to be able to force decisions today.
And again, Madam Chair and Mr. Commissioner, I don't, I'm not seeking trump cards. I'm just saying, these are facts on the table that can't be dismissed.
Madam Chair, that's fair. I'm looking for trump cards, though.
Fair enough.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Reich. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner McLaughlin, my friend, thank you for being here today. I'm sorry you're having to defend the perhaps past bad behavior by some of your colleagues and now the Met Council. And I realize you're trying to do the right thing, and I have great respect for you in that regard. I have four separate questions for you. With regard to the railroad in particular, and the fact that it seems to those of us who have met with them, and I did have the opportunity to meet with the owner, Martha Head, and Mark Wagner, and their lobbyist, Al Hofstedt, along with the mayor, it seems to me, and I'm wondering if it seems to you, that what they're asking for is an enhancement. It's almost like they want something, but they won't tell us what it is. So wouldn't you agree that it seems in this big picture that they're trying to get something from us? And isn't giving veto power to a private sector company like this a setting a dangerous precedent for rail projects in the region?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Goodman, I would say that they're, in my experience over a number of years on these types of projects, that the requests that they're making are not unlike those that are made by other railroads in these circumstances. And there is not a precedent being set here, I don't think. I think the precedent was set long ago. That's why I invoked Lincoln and what he has, the legacy he has left on this issue. So I don't think it's anything new. They have enormous influence and the parameters by which the Surface Transportation Board must make decisions, and I'm not a lawyer, but the parameters that they operate under are fairly limited. It's about the efficiency of the rail system and the financial viability of the railroads and the protection of the shippers. That's not a legal recitation, but that's kind of what, how they make their decision. That's not about safety or about impacts on the community or any of those things that we're concerned about here. So that's the world we're operating in, the legal framework.
You would agree that the water study that's been done might say there's no immediate impact that we can identify right now? Because essentially, what it says is, we don't even know what problems could happen because we're only at 30% at the most engineering. And the study, I've read it too, essentially says, given what we know now, which is essentially nothing, there might not be a problem, but as you move forward, there could be problems.
Well, Madam Chair, I'm not an engineer either. So, my experience, though, with engineering documents is there are qualifiers, there are footnotes in almost any representation that they make. This is, this was fairly, fairly strong recommendation, complemented by, in terms of an assessment that they made, complemented by the recommendation that additional monitoring wells be put in to make sure that during construction and during the operation of the line, that they're actually, that we'd actually know more of what was going on in what, in an area that was essentially a swamp 200 years ago. And so, that's where the reassurance comes in my mind, that this is what you get. I don't think we can be Luddites about engineering. I think that this is a fairly strong statement of engineering assurance with the usual caveats about you can't, you know, we're not going to guarantee it.
And this may be one where, if you wish, Councilmember Goodman, we can also ask for additional response from our staff on whether they've fully been able to review to date, so.
Okay. I mean, I guess I'm just trying to make the point that I saw the study, and it basically said, given what we know now, there might not be a problem, but you're only at 30% engineering, so we don't know what would happen in the future. And I just want to liken it to the situation at 1800 Knox, where a developer came in and said, oh, we always build two-story garages in the basement. Now we have a massive dewatering issue with water being pumped into Lake Calhoun for a very simple two-story underground garage that wasn't supposed to be a big deal. So, I don't know, seems to me digging these kind of fake shallow tunnels into the water table could present a problem later. And I know the park board's doing a separate water study on this as well. So, I just think, yes, they've said, given what we know now, there might not be an issue, but there's a whole bunch of unanswered questions. And if you live near this, you'd probably want, would want to have answers to the unanswered questions.
Madam Chair, the analogy, though, they did specifically speak to the analogy to the apartment building, and that the hydrology of the apartment building is different. And again, not an engineer, but they called that out because that was a concern that was raised in the hearings. The hydrology is not the same. It doesn't, it's not anticipated that there's going to have to be ongoing, active dewatering after this facility is built.
But they didn't anticipate that at 1800 Knox either.
I don't know the answer. That was.
I think for this particular issue, since these are more engineering review questions, maybe, I know Councilmember Goodman has some additional questions, so I want to make sure she gets a chance to ask them.
Just two quick other ones. I know you described this as a delicate moment, and I guess I would describe it as we've sat quietly during all of the other delicate moments and been hit over the head by a bat. So now, all of a sudden, we're being asked to sit quietly through a delicate moment when you slam this out of the ballpark and shove it down our throats. That's what it feels like to me. So what is delicate about this moment? That we might actually stand up for Minneapolis and say, this isn't right for us on a number of levels, and not move forward? What's delicate is you want us to not say no, so that you can move forward. And what we're telling you is, in whatever soft, medium, or hard language we need, we're not comfortable with this. And you need to look for other alternatives that don't mean just shoving it down our throats. I'm confused about this delicate moment thing. And then it gets into my second question of, let Batno go first, then. How does Minneapolis lose from that? That's the equity argument, where the line runs through North Minneapolis, where people who have transportation issues really need it. And where I live in Bryn Mawr, that is hardly an equity issue.
So, Madam Chair, Councilmember Goodman, the delicacy is that this line could be killed. And I don't think that's in the long-term interest of the city of Minneapolis. I don't think we're going to be talking about one Minneapolis, if we're going to be talking about a modern transit system, that is not in the interest of Minneapolis. And I have told the mayor, and I've told St. Louis Park representatives, that frankly, either option that's on the table right now is preferable in both St. Louis Park and Minneapolis to not building this line. And that's my judgment. I have not, I have been doing my best, and I tried to say that in my introductory comment, doing my best to make sure that the freight alternative, the freight relocation alternative was adequately studied. We're still working on that. And so, that, I think, is, that's our posture right now. And I think killing this line, ultimately, in this two and a half month process, I think would be, would be bad for the long-term interest of the city of Minneapolis. Secondly, the notion of sort of search and substitute on all documents and just kind of throw Batno in, that's not how it's going to work. The Obama administration, there are 1,100 days left in the Obama administration. The Obama administration, less than, fewer than 1,100. This administration is supportive of this region. They came to town last week. Pretty good indication that they like the work that we're doing. For us to fumble on this and delay it, I think, is problematic. And so, we, I believe that we're at a moment here where we need to make a decision, we need to work it through. There's a process here that's going to go through June 26th in the schedule that the Met Council set up, and I think we need to do it. I think that's critically important. And I think if we're talking about the fate of Batno, Batno is going to be better off if Southwest gets built on the current schedule. Because we'll keep our reputation with the federal government as a region that builds projects on time, on budget, and a region that's creating a regional, a regional system. And that's what we're committed to doing. And it's my clear judgment that we're, Batno is way better off if we build Southwest than if we let it fail or let it go, be postponed for five years. I mean, there are regions around the country just waiting to jump past us. And that is a huge threat to the long-term transportation system in this region.
So, Madam Chair, I mean, that, I think, really summed it up. Minneapolis, you better take something that will destroy your community for the team or see the project killed. That's really what you're saying. I mean, you might as well just say that directly, out loud. Take this thing that's horrible for the people surrounding it, as well as the region as it pertains to environmental issues. Go back on promises that were made, or you guys will be responsible. I hope you're going to do the same thing in St. Louis Park and call them responsible for killing the rail line because they won't go forward with an agreement they made when we gave our municipal consent.
And I'm just going to take that as comment, and I, you know, Councilmember Goodman, you know, that's why we're here, is to be able to have public dialogue. And so, thank you for putting your thoughts out there. I also want to respect that Commissioner McLaughlin has been standing up here for a significant amount of time. I know that there are lots of other councilmembers, and I'm unclear if these are comments or questions, but I might invite Commissioner McLaughlin to go ahead and take a seat. If there is one of these comments that does require an interaction with the commissioner, he is here, and I'm sure he'd be willing to answer, again, questions. But these may be more comments, or I know some folks do have some questions that are more appropriate for our public work staff. And so, and then I'll also note, we are just a few minutes before noon. And I don't say that to cut off what I know is an extremely significant and important discussion, but just to note for others that we do have a resolution that will be put before us, and a motion has not yet been made on that. So, Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Chair Glidden. Thank you, Commissioner McLaughlin. It was good timing on that because what I'm about to say is predominantly comment. However, I may have a question towards the end. My main frustration is this idea of a promise and renigging on that promise. The statute, which I've read in extent, as well as the commentary and the testimony, in my mind is, it's exceedingly clear. St. Louis Park had upwards of $5 million in total, about $1 million from the state, a substantial amount of money through debtting and bonding and from the county, $5 million in total, to do remediation of a particular site, which was the Golden Auto site, and to do economic development around that corridor. Now, they didn't just get that money for free. Let me say it again, they did not just get that money for free. This was a precondition. In return for getting that money, they promised, in no uncertain terms, to take the freight reroute when it came time. And it is now time. And just to really give the rundown of, this wasn't some vague idea or vague concept that was considered. It's definitive, and it's in the statute. It was in 1997, I was a sophomore in high school, I think, and then they gave the rundown pretty clearly here. It's, the fund created, and this is Menstat 338B.81, it's the Environmental Response Fund. It's the uses of the fund. The fund created in subdivision 1 must be used for the following purposes. Acquisition through purchase or condemnation of lands or property which are polluted. They got that money. Two, paying the costs associated with indemnifying or holding harmless the entity taking the lands. Three, paying for the cost of remediating the lands. Four, once again, paying for the pollution costs. And number five, contemplates rail traffic. And they outline specifically in subdivision 6, it says, the first priority, first priority for the use of the Environmental Response Fund created in this section is to clean up the site located in St. Louis Park. And then, and to provide adequate right-of-way for a portion of the rail line to replace the 29th Street line in the city of Minneapolis, including making rail improvements, changing the curve of the railroad track, and eliminating a switching facility. That switching facility, by the way, is still there, and I think would provide, if it was eliminated and they did additional economic development there, it would provide substantial benefit for St. Louis Park. So I don't even know why they would be opposed to this. And finally, and improving the land for economic development. Secondly, this is chapter 231, article 16. And this is the most important part. Grants from these accounts, so in other words, that money shall be available only upon confirmation from the Commissioner of Transportation that Hennepin County and the city of St. Louis Park have entered an agreement, and specifically, that agreement was to ultimately take the rail. To qualify for receipt of the funds under subdivision 1, Hennepin County and the St. Louis Park, after consultation and negotiation with the representatives of affected neighborhoods along the impacted and proposed rail line, entered an agreement with respect to the following. Number one, and here's where it is. A portion of the site must be used to provide adequate rights-of-way for transferring railroad traffic from the Canadian Pacific Railroad Line from Louisiana Avenue in St. Louis Park easterly to Trunk Highway, 55 Hiawatha Avenue, commonly referred to as the 29th Street Depression, to the Canadian Pacific Railroad Line from 29th Street Railline northerly to the Burlington Northern Connection entirely within, entirely within the city of St. Louis Park. This seems to be extremely plain language to me. I don't know how they get out of it. Additionally, there's testimony and commentary from Senator Steve Kelly. Senator Steve Kelly says, county officials say the move was intended to be temporary, and that's the move, by the way, to the Kennelworth Corridor. They point to the 1997 legislation by former state Senator Steve Kelly. And he says this, he says, this project is going to be at the top of the list. We're going to get this site cleaned up and that construction done so that the trains can run through St. Louis Park as soon as possible. St. Louis Park ultimately took the money. In order to take that money, they made an agreement. We're now operating as if that agreement didn't exist, and I think we need to hold them to that contract.
All right, Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say, I think there's a George W. Bush quote out there about shame out there about shame on some people for being fooled, or something like that. But basically, we have established that St. Louis Park has reneged on this deal to reroute freight. And, you know, I want to see this project move forward. When thinking about the shallow tunnel, though, I wonder what would stop, especially reading the CTIB letter about budget constraints and a reminder to us that we are within tight project-budget constraints. What would stop us from basically being reneged on again and saying, "Okay, well, you've provided municipal consent, and I'm sorry, but the shallow tunnel, we don't have funding for it. It can't go through." And I do believe that maybe staff or Mr. Commissioner or my fellow colleagues can remind me, wasn't there some sort of underground tunnel with the central corridor project that was supposed to happen and then was pulled out due to budget constraints? I thought I heard something about that.
So, Commissioner McLaughlin clearly wants to respond to that. And I just want to note that Peter Weginias has also asked to have some response to the points made.
The clear understanding that we have and that council has is that if a shallow tunnel were approved with municipal consent, and then at a later time, for whatever reason, that shallow tunnel had to be abandoned, that municipal consent would once again be required. So, there would still be, a new municipal consent would be required. The analogy to the University of Minnesota situation is not appropriate. The tunnel that was discussed at the University of Minnesota was never approved in the, as the locally preferred alternative. It was discussed in the earlier stages of the discussion of the central corridor, was never approved. I was there when the Board of Regents provided municipal consent for the at-grade, that was the only municipal consent that the University of Minnesota provided, for the at-grade transit plaza that is now being built and will open up within a few months. So, the analogy to the University of Minnesota situation is not accurate. The municipal consent, if it were provided for a shallow tunnel, and for whatever reason that had to be abandoned, the Met Council would have to be back here at this city council to get a new municipal consent for whatever was proposed as an alternative.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. And I was interested in details on that university piece. I didn't mean to say that that's the analogy. I was wondering history on that. And I would ask our city attorney if that would be legally binding around municipal consent being withdrawn, and if there is the possibility that the state legislature could override that somehow.
So, I am going to first let Peter Weginias comment and let the city attorney kind of review that question, knowing that we are going to return to her for some comment on that. Peter Weginias.
Madam Chair, first of all, Commissioner McLaughlin is correct. The parallel with the university is, it is not the same situation here. He is also correct that we have been provided the assurance on multiple occasions by the Met Council that were one or both of the shallow tunnels to disappear at some later point or be taken out of the project, we would be asked to provide municipal consent again. Two things on that point. I want folks to appreciate, while that's, Commissioner has represented the process accurately, the political reality of what it would be with bulldozers poised in the event that information came, the political, the pressure on you to not stand in the way of the project would be monumentally higher than the pressure that is already being felt as it relates to this project. So, I just want to make that point. That has to be taken into account on top of the official process. Second of all, we have been, and for that reason, both under Mayor Ryback and under the Mayor Hodges, we have asked again and again and again the Met Council to provide us with some reassurance greater than simply having a second bite at the apple, precisely because the time to get those decisions made and those reassurances is now. The Commissioner's description of the June 30th, June 26th deadline, whatever it is, is accurate, and we should take it seriously if for no other reason than the governor takes it seriously. And he's the only reason we have the Trans Systems Report. So, for all those reasons, now is the time to get the assurances, both what Commissioner McLaughlin referred to and what Mayor Ryback and Mayor Hodges have both been asking for in addition to that. And we're going to be working with our city attorney's office to make sure we get something beyond that. And number two, we are counseled constantly by the, our city attorney's office, that we are a creature of the state, and the legislature does have powers to override. But on that point, I would defer to this attorney directly.
And I'm unclear if Mr. Conover or Ms. Siegel is prepared to comment, but I know there was a little conference that took place, so.
Madam Chair, I'll start, and then I may have to defer to my expert, Mr. Conover. But if, on the question of municipal consent, if there are changes made by the Met Council, it is our interpretation that they need to resubmit that to the local jurisdictions. And then also, obviously, the legislature can, as Mr. Weginias said, you know, override or overturn things. They have the ultimate authority. And I don't know, Mr. Conover, if you want to add to that response, or if there are additional questions.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'm going to turn the chair for just a moment to Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question for Commissioner McLaughlin, and I do want to thank you for your leadership and share your commitment to building the Southwest Light Rail Line. The county's Transportation, Transit Improvement Board, CTIB, passed a resolution that created a deadline for municipal consent for this project, June 30th, 2014. Do you feel that it is possible for a resolution to come forward that would allow for the relocation of freight within that timeframe? Are there actions being taken by the Metropolitan Council, or Hennepin County, or anyone to really actively and meaningfully pursue that option? Or are we being asked to basically support an option that doesn't include freight relocation as a meaningful choice?
Mr. Chair and Councilmember Bender, the county's Transit Improvement Board, when it put that deadline in, the original proposal was for an earlier deadline. We moved it to the 30th so that the municipal consent schedule could be fulfilled. Secondly, there were, it was an explicit commitment on the part, and statements were made explicitly by various county commissioners, that this was not picking between the alternatives. The exhortation inherent in that resolution was, "It's time to pick." And so, there's no, there was no effort to pick which of the two alternatives was better. We wanted to make sure that, and this was across all five counties that are in CTIB, that it was time to make a decision. Third, we are looking at what that schedule would look like, and we think that there is a way to do it to meet the deadline. Yes.
Great. Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you. Thank you again, Commissioner, for being here. And I just wanted to let everyone know, of course, that I'm a huge supporter of the Southwest LRT project and I want to see it go forward. But as Councilmember Goodman pointed out earlier, because I voted on that LPA, I wanted to make sure the co-location was a big factor in my decision. I guess I wanted to kind of shift the conversation back to a public works conversation. So, if Ms. Hager could join the thing. I wanted to talk about the reports, specifically the CDI report and the Trans report. If you could identify any flaws that you found in those and any conflicts that we might have to overcome for that process?
Sure. Madam Chair, councilmembers, the city of Minneapolis did review both reports and did submit technical comments on Monday as requested by the Met Council. Generally, we did find that the statements made by Trans Systems with respect to meeting the AREMA Design Standard as required by them are true. We found that the curvature and the profile and alignment of their design meets those standards and, in many cases, exceeds those standards, as previously stated. We also did review the report that Civil Design, Inc. submitted. And again, Civil Design, Inc. is the engineering firm retained by TC&amp;W to advise them through this process. And we found a number of technical errors within their report and their conclusions and some of their statements. And we have included those in great detail in our staff submitted comments to the Met Council. I'd be happy to walk through some of those here if you'd like. But there was probably about a page and a half to two pages of comments that we submitted on that item.
I assume the chair's returned to Vice President Clinton. Thank you. Have those comments, have we been, shared those comments back? Because if not, I appreciate receiving a copy of those. And if you wanted to maybe highlight some of the technical things that you can identify, that would be great. I don't expect you to read a page and a half of comments, but thank you.
Sure. Madam Chair, councilmembers, you did receive a copy of these comments. I think Peter Weginias had emailed a packet out, including the letter from Mayor Hodges, on Monday. Generally, just to summarize, we have consistently heard from the railroad that they have concerns about horizontal curves and grades up and down along the alignment. And they put a lot of weight on that concern, rightfully so. And they go on to make a bold statement that the Kennelworth Corridor is significantly better than the design put forth by Trans Systems. And we are not finding the technical information to back that statement up. In fact, we can refute that in some cases here. And if I can just go into a little bit of technical weeds with you, the CDI report notes that a 120-car unit train is approximately 7,700 feet in length, and that the Trans Systems alignment contains three reversing curves within a distance of 5,000 feet. So, reversing curves, changing direction with a horizontal right and left movement. What they fail to note is that within the Kennelworth alignment, there's three reversing curves within a distance of 6,900 feet in one segment, and four reversing curves within a distance of 6,000 feet on another segment. So, there are challenges with curvature in both alignments, but they both can meet the needs of the railroads there, obviously, because they're using Kennelworth today and because the Trans Systems design meets the design standards set forth. CDI also directly quotes a portion of an engineering, an AREMA engineering publication, and I want to find our comment on that here, where they talk about the concern and why reversing curves are a concern for the railroads. We had some staff locate that actual publication and read it in full. And what we found is that their statement, their quote, was pulled out of context and used out of context in their report. So, the statement is really talking about a true reverse curve where there's zero tangent between the curves. And the Trans Systems design actually calls for 880 feet of tangent between reversing curves, whereas the most stringent standard that we're looking at here, which is the BNSF Design Standard, calls for a minimum of 200 feet. And so, the design by Trans Systems far exceeds that requirement. And we've pulled out and actually provided the full quote from that publication in our technical comments.
Thank you, Ms. Hager. So, we are, I think, getting to the end of folks' ability to stay for this meeting, knowing that we still haven't had the resolution put before us. And I know Councilmember Reich is in queue to be able to make that motion. And I understand councilmembers Palme Sano and Goodman have been so gracious to try to reduce their comments to as brief as possible, just so we're able to get to the resolution, please. Thank you. Councilmember Palme Sano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this question is rather quick, and I think it might be for Commissioner McLaughlin. If freight gets co-located in the Kennelworth Corridor, who owns the land underneath those railroad tracks?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Palme Sano, we currently own it. It would be our intention to transfer that ownership to either the Metropolitan Council or to the state at this point, but that is not resolved at this moment.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for the way you've handled this hearing that could have been really ugly and was not as a result of your leadership. So, thank you. I just want to make one final point with regard to the issue of municipal consent, without putting our attorney on the spot, because she'd love to argue that we have it and they can't move forward without it. The truth of the matter is, they can move forward without it. We can say no, and they can say, "Too bad." They can do that now, and they can do that later. So, we can say no now, and they can say, "Oh, you evil people. You've killed Southwest LRT, but we don't want to kill Southwest LRT. It's too big to fail. It's like the Viking Stadium, so let's just keep moving forward, even if it's a bad idea in this location with this alignment, under these circumstances." And they can do that in the future as well. So, if we come forward and say yes, we'll agree to these fake shallow tunnels that will destroy the entire corridor, and in the end, legislators from greater Minnesota, legislators from the East Metro, CTIB members or others decide that this fake shallow tunnel thing is a bad idea and too expensive, they can move forward without our consent. We can say, "No, we don't like it. It's terrible." But as has been said by, I think, Peter Weginias, when the shovel is ready, they can go to the state and shove it down our throats at that point. That is the risk that we take in moving forward with this issue of municipal consent. So, it is absolutely unfair to say, "We have the power to stop it later." We do not.
Okay. And I'm not, were those your exact words? I don't think so. Anyway, it's, come on, it's 12:17. All right. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a submitted resolution, which I hope to modify the very end part to now reflect the language as I will read. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of City of Minneapolis, that the city of Minneapolis reaffirms the same position it has held since 2010, which is that the city of Minneapolis opposes co-location of both freight and LRT together in the Kennelworth Corridor, and this includes the shallow tunnel options. And all the other supporting statements to that point stand. And to Councilmember Goodman's point, this is our position, and it is not modified thus. We move forward with our position strong. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. And so, we do have this motion before us, and I think it's just, thank you for just alerting us, because I know there's been a couple of just different drafts, and so, thank you for clarifying for us the final version. And so, at this point, if there is discussion on the motion, I will take that. I'm just unclear. Councilmember Frye, did you have discussion on the motion?
Chair Glidden, it's one brief, one-sentence comment, and then I'm happy to move forward. I just wanted to make very clear that I, and I think most of my colleagues, very much want Southwest Light Rail in some form. For me specifically, it's just important. They contract, and specifically those that are in statutes, to be valid and honored.
Okay. And I am not seeing further discussion, so the motion is before us. Is there? Okay. And Councilmember Reich, did you have an additional comment on the motion?
And, you know, I would just extend to those who are listening from other jurisdictions that, you know, we've been very thoughtful. This has been a good discussion. But just because we're not jumping up and down and yelling loud, doesn't mean we don't mean what we say. That's my only point, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And seeing no further discussion, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that item is approved. With that, we have concluded with our agenda for committee the whole. We do traditionally, at this point in time, have reports from committees. Due to the lateness of the hour, I'm going to ask committee chairs not to make their reports and refer folks to what is in their books. But if there is something that you believe is critical to alert your colleagues to, I'm just going to open that opportunity to committee chairs to alert colleagues to anything that you feel is critical from your committee. Councilmember Goodman, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a number of items on our agenda. I only want to speak to one of them. This is the Community Development and Regulatory Services Agenda. This is a fairly serious and significant action to revoke the liquor license at Champion's Bar. It is very infrequent that we do something like this. We had a very good, thoughtful discussion in committee, and there is a prepared findings of fact that I would encourage everyone to take an opportunity to read. And I'll just leave it at that and note the severity of an action like this and the very intense findings. findings, 75 findings of fact by the Administrative Law Judge, and actually, it is quite an interesting read.
Okay. Thank you for that, and that is exactly the kind of item that if other committee chairs would like to alert councilmembers to, I invite you to do so. And I'm just looking around, and I'm not seeing any other takers there. I will alert colleagues to one item that is in, you will find in motions, and it will appear on the agenda as a new motion. This is actually an intergovernmental relations item that was not ready at the time of our committee, but has been requested, personally requested by Speaker Thiessen, as well as our IGR staff, for us to add as a support item on our legislative agenda. There is what has been termed the Women's Economic Security Act, which has been proposed at the state legislature. I will just note that it aligns very strongly already with many of the positions on our agenda, and this just formalizes our support around what are several statutory amendments that are being proposed as part of this Women's Economic Security Act, and invite you to take a look at that. And with that, I'm just looking here, I believe that we have concluded with our business, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.